We're not calling into order.
That's a nice job, though.
Yes, it was.
Neely wanted to go.
Yes, Mr. Neely purchased that clock and donated it. All right, gentlemen, we need to conduct a public hearing for council meeting. So we will do that first.
Before we do plug this?
No, that's part of the regular meeting meeting.
It is habit. But for the record, Mr. Holt Safer is not here this evening. I don't know if he's going to make it or not. And the public hearing deals with conditional use requests for Triple Sun Spirits and also a conditional use request for the Yergi Brewing LLC, both to be located at 518 Bank Street. And I will turn the hearing over to our Solicitor Attorney, Demick.
Thank you. This is going to be a conditional use hearing. We don't have too many of them because our ordinance is not set up for them. But basically what that means is you are sitting as a zoning hearing board to review a permitted use with specific conditions. As long as those conditions are met, you must grant the use unless there's some public health, safety, or welfare matter involved. The application has been filed by Kissler, Velma G. Kissler, Sixth Street Irrevocable Trust, and Yergi Brewing, and it involves 518 Bank Street in Imaeus. It is our first conditional use that I'm aware of for, not as a brew pub, but as a broader craft brewery under the newly enacted ordinance 1128. First of all, are there representatives here for the applicant? Is there anyone here?
Yergi Brewing, that's me.
Do you want to come forward, please, just in case we have any questions? All righty. Is there, and you're going to be here for both applicants?
Nope, they're separate.
Okay.
Separate company, separate representative.
All right, and who's here, who is here for Yergi then?
I'm Yergi.
You're Yergi. Who's here for the trust? Anyone?
No.
No.
Someone here from the distillery.
That's Triple.
Triple Sun.
That's Triple Sun.
Okay, let's start with this. Could I have your name, sir?
Certainly. James Yergi, Y-E-R-G-E-Y.
Are there any objectors here that wish to be recognized and potentially appear as an objector? Let the record indicate there are none. Now, the application is in front of us. Normally, what we would do is have you, through your lawyer, present all of the necessary facts to meet the requirements of the ordinance. Our conditional use requirements are set forth in Section 118. I think it's 120. And since we're in the B.C. zoning district, there are special regulations for that, found in 309, and then again in the table of 601, as well as Section 606, which deals with parking. Now, rather than torture you tonight, since I know that Mr. Farnsworth has reviewed this and the Planning Commission has reviewed this, and those documents have already been returned, I just ask if you would explain what your plan is, and I have it here, but just explain it generally to the board, please.
Certainly. I'll just, I just have a quick thing I prepared just to kind of get me through what it is that I'm planning to do. So, and if you'll give me one minute just to go through this. You know, after having a 32-year career as a Ph.D. chemist and experience of a homebrewer over like 20 years, I'm looking to self-finance and operate a small business that uses both my knowledge as a chemist and my passion with homebrewing to bring beer to the local community. I intend to establish a craft brewery, production one or two days a week, and a taproom that's open to the public in the late afternoon, evening hours, typically Thursday through Saturday, possibly Sunday afternoon. I will operate the brewery production myself and will employ one or two, one to three, part-time employees to help run the taproom. There is already adequate water, sewer, and electric services present on the site, as well as sufficient parking on-site and access for the disabled into the portion of the building that I'm looking to lease. Given the adequate off-street parking at the site, normal business hours for the public being late afternoon, early evening, I believe there should be minimal negative impact on traffic, parking, or nearby residential neighbors.
Okay. You should be aware that, or at least the council should be aware, that under our new ordinance, we consider this craft brewery as the same as a tavern or nightclub for parking. That's one per 40 square foot for total floor space. But our zoning officer has already approved it. And then in our B.C. zone, there's a Section 606, has specific general provisions on parking. Basically, they want you to park behind. If you're going to park on the side, you need a fence and everything. But it appears also that you comply with that, from what I've been able to.
It's a fence, Stephen.
Yes. The, as I say, I normally would have you go through and do each one, but since we know that the zoning officer has reviewed that, unless there's any members of council or the mayor that wishes to hear in depth, more detailed compliance with the zoning ordinance, I will not ask any other questions. But certainly, council people can.
I would actually like to know a little bit more about exactly how the flow of all of that will work. I'm obviously very familiar with that location. Bank Street is a two-way, you can go both directions, but it's not designed really to have two cars going both directions. I know, based on information from a general administration meeting when we talked with Triple Sun Distillery, that they were going to be using the gated entrance off of Bank Street. Is that still the case? Or will the South Fifth Street entrance be used as well?
I would expect that we would use the South Fifth Street entrance more predominantly, just because it's easier to get in and out.
Yeah.
Again, I also expect that a fair amount of the traffic is going to be walk-in traffic. But for that traffic that's coming, that's driving, the easier directions is going to be to come down Railroad Street, in which case you're going to be pointed at that gate.
Right.
So my intention would be to have that gate open for the public.
Okay. And that gate is currently a locked gate that the people that rent spaces there. What?
And I would keep it locked when we are not open or they are working.
Yeah.
And, you know, we haven't worked out all the details of that with the landlord, but presumably if he wants it locked when there's only one of us in there, we'll do that.
Yeah.
But certainly when the taproom's open, we would, you know, open that gate.
And would you have the other gate open as well? I mean, it sounds like.
Potential. I mean, if you guys have an objection to having both open, I wouldn't. But I would prefer to have both open. That would actually make it easier for people to come and go.
Just so council's aware, Section 606, 5, called Traffic Flow, says all parking lots with access from Main or Chestnut Street, which does not apply in this case, must be one-way, egressing to a side street or an alley. Appropriate signage indicating the flow of traffic must be provided and maintained by the property owner. So that is addressed, but in the narrow circumstance. For you, so you're aware, you may add reasonable conditions to your approval, which could involve the gates and traffic flow.
Wes, since you're familiar with Bank Street more than any of us, if they came out the Bank Street exit there, would it be beneficial that it would only be a right turn only there and guide the traffic to Fifth Street instead of going down the other way towards the other brewery? Do you think that'd be safer, or that's not really an issue?
I mean, I'm simply going on my use pattern. And that would be that Bank Street is a street, just like all the alleys in our town. I know we don't call them alleys, but they are. The Bank Street is one that you basically find someone's driveway, you kind of pull over to.
Pull over.
And then let the other car go by. And, but I think if we were increasing traffic, which I think with two businesses, another business down the street, we still have the Merc there as well, I could see it being better just to use South Fifth Street. Again, that's not using anything other than my own observation.
So only one entrance and exit?
Yes, making that, that's a much larger entrance. It's easier to see. The building kind of blocks that exit from the other gate. But the gate that goes on to South Fifth Street is a little bit more wide open. They can also drive straight directly up Railroad Street. Thank you.
Do you have any objection to that, sir?
I don't. Do you? I'm just thinking, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
That's the second condition.
Yeah.
No, I mean, ingress and egress.
Oh, no, I understand.
Is something that is certainly within the purview of council to question, and they can add, they could add that as a condition.
Sure.
That ingress and egress only be from the gate, the existing gate on South Fifth Street.
We would.
Now, that's up to however the motion is worded when you make a motion on this.
How about having no exit signs onto Bank Street, but they can enter there?
Yeah.
That way, if they're coming from the other place, they can enter that way, instead of going all the way down the Fifth and then swinging around. And they would all exit on Fifth Street then, but they could still enter on Bank.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, it's all.
You're worried about the two-way traffic on Bank Street, correct?
I am. I mean, I think that definitely an increased traffic flow in that area at certain times, which, I mean, the Merc is busy at certain times as well, which are going to coincide with a similar timeframe to the Thursday through Sunday.
Right.
Yeah, I think that that corner there could be problematic. There's not a huge, on this drawing, it looks like there's a little bit more space, but it's really actually pretty tight. When you're coming down the street and someone else is going to pull in, you pretty much quick-hit the brakes and pull to the side so they can actually pull in. So I think that all traffic should go on the South Fifth Street side. But again, I'm just going on observation. I have no traffic engineering background, so. Please.
Would this be handled by a motion now to make it?
No, and once we close the public meeting.
We're just hearing information now.
When you act on it in the regular meeting, someone will make a motion to either approve or disapprove the conditional use. And if they approve it, if they wish to add conditions, they would do so as part of the motion. You'd say, you could either make a motion to say ingress and egress on South Fifth Street only, with ingress off of Bank Street, but no egress. I mean, you could, and that would cover it. Now, there may be other things you wish to add. It's a very valid point.
Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, and my second, and it's an overlying one, and you might throw in some additional information here if you have an idea there. But I think that, from my observation with Funk Brewery, is that it's being used, which is fantastic. We want businesses in town. But I don't believe that the parking lot is, for one, advertised as well to encourage people to come in. But I know that on Sixth Street now, there is considerable parking traffic, which I would see happening, pretty much the same exact thing happening here. It's easier if they just pull right into the street. Is there something that you are planning on doing to encourage your patrons to use the parking lot?
I was not planning on it, just because I assumed they would find it more convenient. Because unlike Funk, there's no way to get into the building unless you come through the parking lot. So if you want, I could put a sign at the entrance, "We encourage you to park on-site." You know, I don't know, I don't, I would say how I can force somebody to pull in there, but.
No, I mean, what you just mentioned is actually very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, they can't get into the.
That'll be the only entrance that'll be used.
There's no, no, there is no entrance on Bank or Fifth Street in the building.
Okay.
And in fact, the entrance most likely to be used for the brewery is actually on the back parking lot side.
Yeah, I see that's the one that's labeled Entrance Two and Entrance One.
Right.
I'm assuming are both for your space, or is it?
The one that's on kind of the corner up near Bank Street is actually into a quote "common space" that goes between both businesses.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's a very good distinction of the difference. Because I don't know if other council members agree with that, that there's a considerable amount of traffic that, or people that don't use the parking lot at Funk, and I wouldn't want to see that same result.
Sure.
Here, it's only, people do what's most convenient.
Right. And, you know, they're going to be parking even further away there because it's not, I mean, you can go quite a ways up Sixth Street and still walk there conveniently.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You won't be able to do that here because it's kind of a tight corner.
Yep.
Wes, I have a question for you. On Bank Street, is there anywhere that anyone can pull off on there and park? Squeeze a car in anywhere?
No. The space, if you're looking kind of at the top of our drawing here, is all pavement, but those are parking spaces for, there's an apartment, a chiropractor, there's the coffee shop.
Yep.
And then there's the St. Luke's spot. And that's all, Hardscape people can easily pull off, but nowhere that they could park legally, at least.
Okay.
And I believe it's all marked, too.
Yeah, 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 so those are all private spots.
All the businesses in the back are required.
Yeah, if someone was parking there, they would be in a tow zone.
Okay. Right, that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, my only concerns were just how the traffic flows there. I would see it being problematic to have increased flow on Bank Street. And then, based on what you said there, where it would only be natural that people would want to get to, as close as they can to the door, it's just how people work. And so that would encourage them to park in the parking lot. And that addresses that concern.
One question for you. The, on the drawing here, it states there's an unleashed space. Is there any intentions to use that unleashed space, or unleashed?
Unleashed, I know what you mean.
Sorry, unleashed, I said. Unleashed.
I knew what you meant. Pardon me. There is not at this time.
Okay.
Yeah. I can't, I don't need that much space in our, you know.
Okay.
And don't foresee it in the future.
Mr. Barrett, you have a question?
Yeah. No, I agree with Wes 100 percent. I think that's a good idea. I know years back, we were trying to even make Bank Street a one-way, but it just didn't go over good with the neighbors and that. But that's a good idea.
Mr. Brown?
Maybe Mr. Pepe or Demick can answer this question, or whoever. So, like you said, Mr. Mayor, making it one-way. I like Mr. Leibnerberg's idea, where you would come out, exit only onto Bank Street. But from there, can you put a signage there, one-way, directing going east?
No.
No, that would require.
That's an ordinance you'd have to adopt.
Right.
I mean, you can do it, but you'd have to go through the ordinance process.
My question is, can it be done? I understand the process. But my question is.
You're looking to make a certain portion of the street one-way.
Yes.
One-way west.
Yeah, right there, where if I'm exiting. If I'm exiting, we're.
Yeah, you probably, you probably could.
Be one-way, which is maybe 100, maybe about 50 yards to Fifth Street.
You could make part of a street one-way. I think you need to examine the feasibility of that.
Absolutely, but I'm just.
But yeah, you could do that.
Well, normally what you would do, maybe it would be to get, let the police get involved, because you're going to have, it's very difficult when you put a jam up halfway down the street and convert it to one-way.
There's parking lots, it won't work, but I was just curious.
It can be done. There's a couple municipalities that have them, so.
Mr. Barrett?
If I could just comment on, I would discourage that. Because one of the things, pulling out on a Chestnut Street is a challenge at Fifth Street, if you're making a left. And I find that a bit of traffic, if they're coming down, goes down Bank Street, so they can use the light at Sixth Street as a safer way to cross the road. So if we made it so they couldn't get there, I think that would be problematic.
Mr. Leibnerberg?
So, whatever we decide to do here, can we do it also on a trial basis? Because we're really not sure pros and cons of doing it a certain way. Is that an option, to do something on a trial basis?
Yeah, it's not really an option, because you have only 120 days from the date that the conditional use was filed. Otherwise, it's deemed approved without any condition. So that's why it's on the agenda tonight. Could we get a voluntary change? Yes. I mean, if all the parties would agree, we could do that. I'm still a little bit, as I understand Wes's point, he did not want cars pulling out of the lot onto Bank Street.
Right.
Or really in. I mean, you're creating, really mine is that you're increasing traffic on a narrow street.
Sure.
And it would not seem beneficial, just on my own interaction with the amount of traffic that's there, especially at peak times, when, like I said, people cut down there so they can go down to the light at Sixth Street instead of having to wait to make a left.
So if the.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Going, I thought what I heard that you would prefer would be to have the Fifth Street entrance be the only one it's used by customers. If we did, if we did that, I know, and it was, I'm just, if we did that, would you still allow the two-way traffic on Bank? And for those people who wanted to be able to then, because part, I want to be clear here. I mean, having a brewery close to Funk is actually a good thing for both of us. So if you make it one-way coming towards me, I can't have, there won't be people who want to go from my brewery over to Funk.
Yeah, just to clarify, my suggestion is actually eliminate the.
The entrance.
The entrance and, exit and entrance.
That traffic at the gate.
On Bank Street. Yeah, just eliminate that.
Just keep that locked.
Right. But then use entrance and exit on the South Fifth Street side.
Okay.
Is that how you interpreted what I was?
And I just, yeah, and still leave Bank Street as it is.
Yeah, yeah.
And people who want to, at least then, they're not stopping midway down to make turns.
Right. And I would think that, I mean, based on that if you're consuming alcohol, that some people would leave their car there and be able to walk in.
Yes.
I believe that that gate has a man entrance, just like a single thing. I could be wrong on that, but.
I'm not 100 percent sure. If it does, I would certainly open that.
Mr. Leibnerberg?
So something that you said made me think that maybe my option might be a better option, where you can only maybe reverse what I said before and only exit there. Because if they're going to go down Sixth Street and you want them to go down there to have a safer entrance on the Chestnut Street, maybe you want them to be able to exit there, but no entrance there.
So you're making it an exit-only?
Making it an exit-only. And then, another thought, Wes, and this really doesn't have anything to do with them other than the increased traffic. Wes is correct, coming out of Fifth Street there, going on the Chestnut, it is a very dangerous point, left there, or even crossing it. So maybe the Safety Committee ought to look at having only a right turn only sign there. And that maybe that will prevent a lot of future accidents, especially if people are drinking. Reaction time slows.
Right.
Maybe that's a thought. I've seen a few of those now in town, by the fairgrounds, on the far side, it says right turn only. I'm sure it's for the same reason, crossing a busy road, you know, trying to make a left turn, so.
Yeah, there's just a lot of blind spots there with the trees and stuff.
Those are just two thoughts.
Do you run into an issue? I mean, because it's just as dangerous right out here.
Right, I think we could see that scenario multiple locations.
Multiple locations throughout the whole borough, actually.
But drinking from three establishments.
But what I'm saying is you might force more traffic to come out here and turn left off of Railroad, on the fourth.
Yeah, this is just as.
And that's just as bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson has a.
Going to Sixth Street to the light is the best.
Excuse me?
Are you offering food services, though?
Uh, just snacks at the craft brewery. It will be a quote, "Bring your own food," and I'll encourage people to bring stuff in from restaurants. If we're allowed and it works out, we will probably have, you know, with the landlord as well, you know, food trucks there or something in the parking lot. But it will not, it is not going to be a brew pub.
Okay. That's what I was curious.
That's, yeah, that's why it's specifically a craft brewery.
Was there a different definition in our?
Yeah, and that's partly as a result of the law, the Pennsylvania law that passed back in June that allowed a craft brewery to serve on-premise in regulatory-approved volumes.
Mr. Leibnerberg?
Thank you. So, since you're in the same building, is there a common tasting room, bar area between the destroy? Are there going to be two separate tasting areas to?
Yep. Yeah, and you got to go through a common space to get between the two. They may or may not be open at the same time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions from council? Any questions from the public? Sir, do you have anything you wish to add?
Not at this time.
In that case, Madam President, we'll close this hearing. I leave it to you to do so. It appears that all of the testimony is in and we'll address this at the appropriate time in the regular meeting.
We have a second hearing to conduct. Am I still closing the first hearing?
Yes, this hearing is suspended.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to close this hearing? Motion by Mr. Anderson, second by Mr. Brown. Discussion. All those in favor? We have six ayes. Okay. We now have to have a second hearing dealing with a conditional use for the same property, but it's for, it's for. Triple. Triple Sun Spirits. I'll get there. All right, Mr. Solicitor, we'll turn it over to you as well.
I'll try to abbreviate this. I assume all the testimony would be identical. Is that correct? Well, when you say more or less, more?
Unless you've got specific questions.
All right, well, we'll get to that. But from your standpoint as to the use and everything that was previously described, it's virtually identical. And it's on the same tract of land. Okay. Is there anything that you wish to add that would modify or change what was earlier testified about this property and its use?
Can you ask him to come to the microphone, please?
Yeah, it's a good idea, so we can hear you. Could you identify yourself, please?
Christopher Quant.
Okay. And your address?
2296 Creekside Drive, Copley.
Is there anything further you'd like to add to or clarify concerning the use that yours may differ in some way? Although I don't see it on all this.
No.
Okay. There were a whole series of questions, I know you were present for it, concerning ingress and egress and the use of South Fifth Street and not Bank Street. Do you have any objection to that, if we add that as a condition of the approval?
No, I don't. Currently, I'd like to add that there's no manway.
There's not, okay.
There is not. And that the gate on Bank Street is never open. It's, ingress and egress currently is executed purely through South Fifth. It's, ingress and egress currently is executed purely through South Fifth.
Why didn't you say that about 10 minutes ago? That word.
You didn't ask me.
He wasn't up.
Mr. Barrett, go ahead.
But, but to.
Yeah, but, but to clarify, the reason why I brought that up is that in your, in
our general administration meeting when we did meet, you did actually use that as your reference point for.
Which Fifth Street?
No, the Bank Street one, that's why I brought it up, and that's why I was confused at.
Understood.
Because it is locked all the time, and I, I mean, we did have a further conversation about it, because I asked, well, it was going to be unlocked, and I, I mean.
I think it's rusted shut, actually.
Uh, just about, yes.
And I believe there was one other thing that was brought up, and that was perhaps council may request that there be a sign to encourage the use of the parking lot, you'd have no objection to that, would you?
No, I would encourage that.
On-site. Okay, is there any questions of council?
One very brief one, you had mentioned about the one spot per 40 square feet.
That's what the ordinance calls for.
And that is met?
That's what Farnsworth said, yes, I did not.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, that, I mean, I just wanted to see that we weren't changing those rules, but that is great.
Yeah, and, I mean, even just looking at the map, you can see the parking, there's actually a much larger space than the, uh, the building itself.
Yeah, I, I mean, I assumed it meant the, I heard it said, but didn't get a clarification, so. Uh, I did have one last question on deliveries and distribution. What type of truck typically has to maneuver on those? Do you use a smaller truck, do you use a?
Yeah, it's gonna be a small truck with a lift gate as opposed to like a 53 or something.
Okay, yeah.
There's no, there's no significant commercial egress, ingress, so it'd be a cube van with a lift gate.
Yeah, I mean, I know that the deliveries that do come there, specifically for the Mercantile Club, struggle in that very tight zone.
Oh, yeah, no, it's one of the smaller U-Haul-sized cube vans.
Yep, great.
Just finally, so it's your position that, that your application meets all of the necessary requirements of the, and objective criteria for conditional use under our zone ordinance, is that correct?
To my understanding, yes, that's correct.
I have nothing further, if council has nothing further, I would say question of the meeting, public meeting being during unless there's any members of the public who wish to have input on this particular application. Let the record indicate that there is no, no one who's objected or even wishes to be heard to the concert, so with that, Madam President, we could close the meeting unless someone else from council wishes to be heard.
Any further comments? Motion to close the hearing on this prop, motion by Mr. Leinber, is there a second? Second by Mr. Schumsted, discussion? All is in favor? We have six ayes. Thank you. We will handle this under the General Administration Committee report when we get to that during our regular meeting. Everybody ready? I'd like to call the September 8th, 2015 Mass. Borough Council Meeting to order, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, for the record, Mr. Holtsaper is not here. Personal appeals, part one, anyone with a personal appeal, please step forward, sign in, state your name and address for the record in any five minutes.
Excuse me, what does that entail, can you say that personal?
If you want to talk to us about an issue that might be bothering you, or you'd like to discuss something?
No.
Their ordinance.
The fact that it's bothering me, I, I'm here, I, I guess it's under parts and recreation.
Haven't come up.
Well, no, if, if you want to say something, could you come up to the microphone, give your name and address, because we need it for the minutes.
Dr. Barhasek, 436 East Harrison Street, Emais.
Could you write your name down, please, sir?
Could you sign in on that paper there?
Oh. What I'd like to know is, does the educational system at both the middle school and the high school have a rocketry program? You know what a rocketry program is, it's a hobby.
I have no idea, so.
So that, that would be probably a better question for the school board.
School district?
Okay, well, it, it's, it has nothing to do with the school board, really, that I can think of. I would, for my grandson, and I would imagine other parents, their children are into rocketry. I asked the zoning gentleman, Jim, I guess that's his name, if there is any area in the borough of Emais that a rocket can be launched in a specified area. Now, the rockets, they're solid fuel, they're one-stage, it's for little kids. The only thing that would have to be considered is the wind, and of course, you never launch a rocket in 10 mile an hour, 20 mile an hour winds. So, as a parent, I would be responsible for my grandson to make sure that the wind is appropriate to launch the rocket, because it, there's no, it's a solid fuel propellant, and.
Sir, I ask you, you're talking about the little, the little.
The booster?
The little booster things you put in the.
Okay.
Correct?
The, the small one?
The, the reason I'm asking is, I know previously, my son was smaller, you know, I, I shot his, what he did for school in that, down community park, and it didn't go far, didn't get caught in a tree, you know, it, you know, if you're talking something big, it's gonna be, you might have some issue with it, but, you know, the park's open, and it's just a small, a small little thing.
Well, now, the smallest that I have seen is approximately, what, 12 inches?
Why, they fly off a stick, a metal, a metal launch?
It, it has a launch pad.
Right.
And it's electrically started through a, a long line, so it's safer the person that's gonna launch it.
With the little parachute, correct?
With the little parachute, so if the whole thing comes down, but that's what I'm saying, it needs an area, because if the wind would pick up, it's going to travel, but there is no flammable liquid that's gonna be coming out.
Approximately how high does one of these?
They can go from 500 up to about, now, maybe 2,000.
Oh.
1750, I have one right now that's for 1750. My son, my grandson picked it out, because he liked it. So, the engine sizes are A10 by 310, it's a mini-stage rocket. Now, I have a rocket that's two-stage, they classify this as a two-stage, as a two-stage, but it isn't, it only has the one propellant.
Mr. Leinber.
What's the worst thing that happens, it lands on a roof?
Well, the thing is, you want to retrieve it so that you can reuse the rocket.
So that's incentive for you to shoot it up when there's no wind, so.
Well, that's the problem.
See where there'd be an issue.
No, the issue is, if the wind is, is at a, a higher speed in the upper atmosphere, it's gonna blow it further. Now, if it lands on somebody's roof, they're gonna complain, because you are gonna hear a little, it's not loud, but you're gonna hear something.
It's no different than my wiffle ball going on somebody's roof when I played wiffle ball.
So, just, just so we could focus this in, is your question, is this a permitted use, or are you petitioning us to make it a permitted use? You said you spoke with our zoning officer.
Right, he said, come to the council and present it to you.
Which means.
It turns into legal issues.
Let me address it real, really simply. I know of nothing in the zoning ordinance that prohibits it, and the prohibiting of a particular, any type of specific use cannot be de facto, you can't just say you can ever use it, you ha, I mean, there has to be uses somewhere unless it's so ultra-dangerous that you can't do it, you can't, like, you can't have blasting and things like that.
No, it's not.
But, in answer to your question, I know of nothing that prohibits it, obviously, lack of common sense can get you in trouble.
Right.
If you become disorderly, if you are breaking windows, if you are disturbing the peace, then you will answer to those charges. But if you just go to a park and launch a rocket, I know of nothing that prohibits it.
So you're saying any park in the area I could use? That's why I asked.
As long as you use your head.
If the middle school had a program, you would, I would then know where to go, where it would be safe.
Right.
That's what, that's my whole question, where can I go where it's safe?
All right, let's do this, let's refer to Parks and Rec. That would be the only location that I can think of, would be one of our, our parks.
It would be, yes.
Community Park, Borough Line Park.
Community Park is where I did it with my son.
Fourth Street.
Fourth Street might be impossible.
You end up Burger.
Community Park, if you did it at one end, you had the whole other end.
There's a variety of rockets, some of these rockets are water-propelled, and they can go like 300 or 400 foot, too, you know?
Mr. Anders, when's your next committee meeting?
It is currently for October 6.
First week in October.
The first week of October? I'm gonna refer this to the Parks and Rec Committee, if you'd like to attend their meeting, that would be October 6 at.
Can you leave maybe your telephone number on that list? That, that meeting may be rescheduled.
Oh, okay.
Per the committee chairman.
Thanks, Ron.
I will be in Massachusetts on that day.
So I, I would have to wait until I hear from them, is that correct, or can I just go ahead and launch one?
In my opinion, you may launch them using common sense.
I understand that. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is my first Rocketeer question in 18 years.
Good evening, I'm Richard T. Farmer, and Alan Homan, Alan Homan is gonna sign in here. For representatives of the 1803 House, the Friends of the 1803 House in Emais, I am president of the Friends of the 1803 House, Inc., located at Keystone and Minor Streets in the borough, www.1803house.org, east of the railroad tracks and the Moravian Church. I'm here to announce that the historic Colonial Buckfence project along the railroad has been constructed, and we encourage you to visit the site and see the handiwork of Eagle Scout candidate Jason Kleckner, Jr. He has donated this magnificent project to the community as a fulfillment of the Boy Scouts Eagle Scout rank. We are grateful for your authorization to complete this project, and grateful for Jason's vision, planning, and execution of this work. We now have a safe barrier that is compatible with our colonial setting, we can now easily conduct 1803 House activities having this safety barrier. Jason should be congratulated for this contribution to the community. We, as the 1803 House, will give special recognition to Jason for his fine work. We also thank the Borough Council for their support of this historically significant community project. Colonial Emais now has a new historic fence. That's our presentation.
Thank you. About.
Quick plug for you, don't you also have Halloween, Mary, Mary Halloween coming up there soon?
We do, there is a large event on the first Saturday in October, and it'll be publicized well in the paper and around town.
Well, that's when we plan to recognize Jason.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we'll do, have a dedication at noon on that day.
I just have one question, how long did it take him to actually do this? This is kind of intricate, so how long did it actually take him to do?
Well, Alan can speak to that, it started out slow and it ended fast.
If you count just assembling the fence itself, it was probably about, I don't know, 30 hours, maybe.
Oh, okay.
But if you count logging the timber that it took to build it, having them shop and sort of solicit funds and materials, live schools, put the whole thing together, it was probably, probably close to somewhere between 100 and 200 hours probably total for, for Jason, Jr.
Wow.
The actual fence, once we got sort of out of the hole there at the, at the retention base off Keystone right away, once we got out of that little, once we got started, it went pretty well, pretty quickly.
Good.
And at some point, Jason's scout friends came and chipped in, and that, that's, that was the rush, finished it with a.
Did you get it?
It was like a blur.
Yeah, on a Thursday evening.
This is wonderful.
The fence is more than 200 feet long, and we feel very comfortable that we have some barrier between our nice lawn and the railroad. That's always a concern to us when we have public events, and I hope you come down and visit the site to see what it's like.
We will, thank you. Very nice.
We included the, the copy of the painting that's in the house, we included that because that's where the idea for the fence came from.
That was the inspiration.
We struggled for quite a while before we realized that, that the fence style was hanging on the wall of the house. What we had to do was sort of look at it if we walked by.
Get durable.
Very nice, very good.
Thanks again.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes, does this picture actually represent, are either of these structures on here? One of, is one of them the 1803 House?
Yes.
The far left?
Yes.
And everything else, no?
Yeah.
We're digging to find the rest.
We are, actually.
Yeah, cool.
Yep.
So this is an actual picture of what it looked like, obviously way before the railroad existed.
1847? 1847, is that when it was on the picture, 1847? July?
And that's probably what it looked like in 1803, maybe minus the fence.
Yeah.
Because they had just finished the house, so you wouldn't have the pastures figured out yet.
Very cool.
It is cool, very nice, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else with a personal appeal?
Yeah, definitely, with the railroad tracks and everything.
Tony Grola, 1302 South 10th Street, Emais. Good evening, council, mayor, president of the council, borough manager, and our solicitor. I'm here as a father of a daughter and a dog, which some of you people know was, had a misfortune up at the 5th and Minor Street last Tuesday, and she and her dog had banked up pretty bad. So I'm here in behalf of her, her husband, and her dog to thank the Emais Police Department, the Emais Ambulance Corps, for being so concerned of her injuries and whatever you have. So, there were so many people that were involved in her neighborhood, and my personal thanks goes to all parties that were involved, okay? So that's that. Now, I have some little issues, I don't, I want you people just to think about what I'm gonna say. If I'm a borough employee, and I want to store, or do store, a, a pop-up camper, a camper, a trailer, or a pickup truck, are they allowed to do it? Now, here's my other thing, if, if I'm a borough employee, or any other employee, do they have the same opportunity to store a trailer, a camper, pop-up tour, a pop-up tour, or a, a vehicle? Now, another thing I have to say is, private property, if compost pile is property, private property, does that only concern one resident, or does that pertain all, all the residents in the Emais here? Okay? I want you people to think of what I'm, I'm saying to you, sooner or later, you'll know what I'm gonna be talking about. Mayor, I have a thing for you, many, many years ago, somebody was on the radio, had a radio show, and, and at the end of the radio show, he said, and now you know the other story. Remember that, mayor, who he was? You should remember him.
That was Harvey.
Was it Waller, Waller?
No.
Paul Harvey.
Yeah, Harvey.
But that's, he, that's what he had, and that's what I want to tell you guys, and that's the rest of the story, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll directly respond to that, first of all, first issue is talking about employees storing personal items. I found out about the issue from Mr. Grola about three months ago, it's addressed immediately, action was taken with all, all the employees which allegedly had personal items stored three months ago. I informed Mr. Grola of that immediately, action was taken immediately. Regarding the private property, Mr. Grola has an issue with the fact that we have a sign that says employees only beyond this point. Mr. Grola thinks that he is entitled to drive past that point, that's his issue at the compost site. I personally believe that there are spaces where only employees should be going, that's why it's, that's why it states employees only beyond this point. If you'd like to visit the compost site and see that exact spot, where we have equipment and certain piles of dirt, you're more than welcome to visit it, but that's the spot where Mr. Grola has a point of contention.
Thank you. Anyone else with a personal appeal? Hearing none, moving to community minute. Any member of council have an item for community minute?
I just have one.
Mr. Schumsted.
Um, this weekend is the, marks the, I guess, the official grand opening of the Emais Historical Society.
Yes, it does.
And they'll have a, a private party, I think, on Friday evening, and then on Saturday, they have several events scheduled, along with the. they have several events scheduled, along with the ribbon cutting, I think is at twelve o'clock, is that true? Yeah, okay. So, you know, I'd like to see the public come out, see what they've done with the building. From what I hear, it, it's beautiful inside, and they've done a great job putting everything together.
Thank you. Also, this weekend, St. Anne's starts Thursday.
Ah, yes.
We also have community yard sale this weekend, correct?
Eight to five, Saturday, rain date, Sunday.
And there's also the first home football game Friday night?
Yep. Yeah, go Warriors. Big game, Houston.
There is a lot going on this weekend, so it will be a busy weekend. Mr. Andrews?
I know, it's still a little awkward since we all have it. Saturday, September nineteenth, from ten to seven, Farewell to Summer Festival at the Emaus Triangle, many great items taking place, hot dog eating contest, banana split, cupcake eating contest, and the list goes on and on. So a great event coming up on the September nineteenth.
There's a lot going on. All right. On your agenda this evening, there is a special presentation, however, that is postponed until October, correct? October, okay. So in your binder are the reading of the minutes from the August seventeenth council meeting. Is there a motion to dispense with a formal reading of those minutes? Motion by Mr. Leydenberg, is there a second? Second by Mr. Shubsta, discussion? All is in favor? We got six ayes. additions or corrections? Hearing none, motion to adopt as drafted. Motion by Mr. Barrett, is there a second? Second by Mr. Andrews, discussion? All is in favor? We had six ayes. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Mr. Brown is abstaining. If you could put that in writing, Mr. Brown. All right. Decision on bids, we have nothing in our binders this evening. Communications. In your binder, there is a letter from Charlene Cook. She is interested in having an event at one of the parks for childhood cancer. She'd like to have the event at the end of this month, I believe. My name is Charlene, I'm a proud resident of Emaus. What I love most about this community is the strong presence of local businesses and the tight-knit community feel. This month is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and I feel that this would be a perfect time to have an awareness fundraiser event. She's looking for the end of the month, Community Park, she'd like to hold Alex's lemonade stand. Mr. Andrews?
Maybe just maybe suggestion, or maybe she would want to, you know, with this farewell summer, kind of like...
Have it right on the triangle.
I mean, that might be a great time for, maybe we can put her in contact with individuals with that.
I do like that idea. Mr. Pepe, could you contact her and suggest that?
I could take that if Mr. Pepe is busy.
You got it.
The phone number's there.
All right, if you want to handle that, as far as Chair of Parks and Rec, we can handle it that way. Uh, yeah, uh, no, I don't see it.
Her email addresses.
Okay, I get it. I'll get, I'll look it up, and if not, I'll, I'll find it.
There are email addresses here, if you just want to connect with her that way. I have no other communications on my desk this evening. Mr. Pepe, do you have any communications?
I do not.
Any member of council have an item for communications? Mr. Leydenberg?
The envelopes that were on our desk were a, a letter from J. P. Mascaro and Sons, and probably should be addressed by, um...
Health and sanitation has a meeting with them.
It's scheduled for next week.
So that's going to be addressed with them?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's another side to that, obviously, we're all aware of.
Mr. Mayor, do you have anything for communication? Nope, all right. Borough engineers report, we have no engineer this evening. Solicitors report?
Very briefly, we had our loan closing last Thursday, you now have your money, and on Thursday of this week, we're gearing up, and I anticipate no, no major difficulties with the real estate closing. So that should end it on Thursday morning at ten o'clock. There's, there's still, there's a myriad of issues, because there's a tenant, but I expect we'll have it all in order tomorrow, is my day set aside just to get everything in order, so that it goes smoothly on Thursday. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Unfinished business, part one. In your binder is Ordinance eleven thirty, this is scheduled for second reading this evening. This is dealing with handicap parking space in the eight-hundred block of Chestnut Street. Is there a motion to read Ordinance eleven thirty in short title? Motion by Mr. Brown, is there a second? Second by Mr. Barrett, discussion? All is in favor? We have six ayes. This is Ordinance eleven thirty, an ordinance of the Borough of Emaus, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, amending Chapter fifteen, section six oh one point two point A of the Emaus Borough Code, adding a resident handicap parking sign on the public street located in front of eight oh three chest, eight thirteen, rather, Chestnut Street, within the Borough of Emaus. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance eleven thirty as read? Motion by Mr. Barrett, is there a second? Second by, hmm, Mr. Andrews. Discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Shubsta?
Aye.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
Mr. Leydenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Gilbert votes aye. We have six ayes, Ordinance eleven thirty is adopted. New business, in your binder is Ordinance eleven thirty-one. This is an ordinance dealing with handicap parking spaces located on North Fifth Street, at twenty North Fifth Street, and in the front of twenty-two North Fifth Street. At last council meeting, or the meeting before committee had brought this up, that they had discussed this, and we had actually denied the request for the parking spaces. However, we did receive a personal appeal at our last public safety meeting, and through those discussions, we have determined that it would be feasible to place two handicap parking spaces at twenty North Fifth Street and twenty-two North Fifth Street. They would be handicap parking spaces, seven AM to twelve PM on Sundays. This would be for the church. Mr. Leydenberg, I believe you had discussed this before, that the churches around the area do have...
St. John's UCC on Fourth and North Street?
At the triangle?
Has the same thing, two handicap parking, and it, right underneath it, it says Sundays, and it has the hours. I think it's only like three hours.
And that's exactly what this does.
And I see that the church is paying for the signs?
Yes.
It's just the cost of labor of putting it in, but I, I support this.
Very good, thank you. Is there a motion to read Ordinance eleven thirty-one as drafted? Motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Barrett, discussion? All is in favor? We have six ayes. This is Ordinance eleven thirty-one, an ordinance of the Borough of Emaus, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, amending Chapters fifteen, sections four oh seven of the Emaus Borough Code, adding two handicap parking signs on the public street located in front of twenty North Fifth Street and in front of twenty-two North Fifth Street on Sundays, only within the Borough of Emaus. Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance eleven thirty-one as read? Motion by Mr. Leydenberg, second by Mr. Barrett. All is in favor? Roll call vote. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Shubsta?
Aye.
Mr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Leydenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
Aye.
Mrs. Gilbert votes aye. If we could schedule this for second reading?
October fifteenth.
Very good. Thank you.
Madam President, may I just make you...
Yes, sir.
Just so you're aware, first reading is basically an authorization to advertise, that's what it is. Second reading is when they pass it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Unfinished business, part two, we have nothing on the agenda. Items not on the agenda, subject to Rule nine. Any member of council have an item that they wish to bring forward?
I missed Rule six.
Mayor's report, Mr. Mayor? None. Committee reports, public work, Mr. Leydenberg?
Next meeting is October first, Thursday at three thirty here, and if nobody has any questions, progress.
Thank you. Health Sanitation and Code, Mr. Shubsta?
Thank you. Nothing for official action. You could see, we had our meeting on August twentieth, and in the meeting, we discussed the fire inspection process. Mr. Farnsworth went through the entire process, explaining to us how he sets up the meetings, the letters go out, and how the inspections are conducted. We also had a discussion in regards to a letter that we received from Alori Bells, from three oh seven North Third Street, discussion about the property. Mr. Farnsworth has been to the residence, both myself and Mr. Andrews both visited the residence. At this junction right now, we'll probably go back to our committee and discuss it a little bit more, before we have anything to bring forth. Other than that, I'll report progress. Our next meeting is scheduled for September seventeenth at four thirty, and as mentioned, we have the letter from Mascaro and Sons.
Progress?
Yep, progress.
Very good. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Andrews?
We actually have one item per official this evening. You'll see a notice from Shane regarding a, to hire a pool manager, her name is Sally Nicholas. Basically, if you read the memo, it, it was felt that we could hire somebody for next year who was a little bit more, has a little bit more experience with, with dealing with the teenagers and with running a pool, and with the, Shane, did you have anything you want to add? I mean, I know you interviewed her, but I've heard all good things speaking of her.
This is our best shot at stability in managing that pool, probably the best shot you've had in almost a decade. We need someone that has more life experience, more management experience, and knows how to operate a one hundred thousand dollar a year business, and she has all of that.